Good morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, July twenty second, twenty twenty five. My name is Don Swinker and I'm gonna call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. To my right, I have Nan Flagle, Bjorn from I T, Lisa from the auditors, Luann over there in the corner. To my left, I got Mike Steinas. And first up on the agenda is Nate from the county conservation. Welcome.
Morning, guys. How are you? So, um, just coming to give you guys a little update on things that have gone on recently, just so you know. Um, we weathered the storms last weekend in some ways. Um, at Spruce Creek, we lost multiple trees. Um, we're still waiting on somebody with a bucket truck to finish cleaning them, pops out, so we have some sites closed down. Uh, there was trees uprooting and some of that, so could have been a lot worse if it would have been the week before on the fourth, we would have. That would have been a nightmare. Um, but we were fairly empty usually the weekend into the fourth, we're not that busy, so. Um, we got lucky in that terms. Um, so, um, we dealt with some complaints on how we handled it, I think. Um, in my opinion, we handled it correctly. Um, just so you're aware, um, one tent had gotten destroyed in the storm. Um, that individual was unhappy with how we handled it. Um, but we tried to be fair to everybody. Our goal is to get the roads open and safety first for everybody in the park. Um, and we went above and beyond in my opinion on that. So if you get some questions, you can call me on, on, uh, how we went about that ten or anybody has issues with how we did it. Um, our board did have a conversation with the individual at our board meeting that was upset, so, um, and we left it at that for that part. Um, so.
I think after that call, she was a little bit better.
Yeah, I think so. Um, and as you know, we can't get to everybody and every issue always has. Right now, at eight second, you guys deal with that all the time too, so, um, it's one of those, we had two storms of two nights. And just kinda hit weird and we tried to handle it with what we had for staff.
I didn't have any complaints.
Good, so, um, so those were the things, um, and then, um, the work has started at Prairie Creek here in last week in line or. I think it's in line. I just drew a blank on their name, excavating, has worked it for, um, Trader Construction out of Bolivia as their subcontractor. Um, so they've started doing, um, the disc golf course, they're putting in baskets and pads, um, and some earthwork out there. Um, they're hoping to move to the highway in the next week or so, sounds like, and start grading out the trail. That will go from town to Prairie Creek. Um, and then, um, so we'll start seeing some movement on the north end also. Um, if you had questions on that.
So what are we looking for completion or opening or what are you talking?
Well, the goal is the end of this year. Um, last time I talked to Schrader, sometime next month, probably is the bridge placement. Um, it sounds like once they get moving on that trail, I think it'll be apparently, it'll be about a month long project to get the trail bridges and everything is what my understanding is, so. Um, hopefully, you know, I think in October, we'll have most things, um, set and kind of complete. Um, there might be some seeding and little stuff. Um, the city manager asked me about ribbon cutting thing and I said, I don't think we wanna plant it any earlier than mid-October at this point, just in case we get a hiccup in some point of the project and, um, but I think.
Well, if we, yeah, for still functional or even if we are functional, possible functional, I mean, you don't have to have the ribbon cutting before you open, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it can be used or, I mean, I assume that if the groundwork being done, that the seeding that can be done will be done soon.
Yeah, yeah, I think, and some of the seedings on us, we'll probably wait till September on some of our seedings. I just know we, whenever we've done seeding this time of year, you don't get great success.
So as we get going with this is, I just look at the potential mowing needs that this is gonna.
Yes.
How's that gonna hit? I mean, cause you guys, there should be fairways and all that kind of trails.
Then we're gonna have to sit down and figure out.
Are you gonna have a dedicated person to do that or?
As of right now, I have a feeling it's gonna be a seasonal, that's gonna get dedicated a little more to Prairie Creek promoting. Um, and that's something our board, we discussed, to what trails that are currently getting mowed on the area, can we eliminate some trails? Make them fire breaks or something else where we don't mow them, but when we are gonna do a burden season or something. Um, some of these things that just try to eliminate, but we're still gonna pick up a load. Um, and then how do we get the, hopefully this disc golf takes hold like they say it's gonna and they could fundraise or bring in some money? And we can maybe contract that portion back out to somebody.
So you may even want to make sure their insurance is into effect that if we get volunteers, I know honestly.
Yes.
There's a lot of golf courses anymore on Friday mornings, there's two or three people go out there and mow grass and weed whack and they just have a ball at it and just so recovered, you know?
Yeah, and I don't know, as of right now, I don't think our county insurance is gonna let somebody just hop on a mower and go mow it. Um, and that's something, I mean, I've had several say, well, I'll volunteer to mow it. We can, I would love to, like it is.
So, but honestly, we need to ask your insurance agent because there's, uh, signatures and.
If we can do a waiver.
Release, yeah, a waiver, these people do that all the time, I, yeah.
We need a waiver, but then also a little bit of guidance on if you're gonna mow, this is how and where.
Yeah, a little training.
This is the, you know, you know, don't just say, hey, go mow.
Yeah, just for the moment.
Pretty soon you're mowing the deer trip. This is the path of my deer.
Yeah, I know. I don't want them to just decide, well, I want this fairway wider, so I'm not.
But I, I do think there's responsible people out there that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I think a few of them have already called, they'd probably be great at it and there's some things to figure out if we can figure going forward. And that, that's even it. How wide do we see the fairways or I guess they call them fairways, it probably is a terrible terminology as a golf course versus the roughs. Um, I think we'll probably do clover or something that doesn't get super tall. Yeah, if it doesn't need mowed once or twice a year and call it good, but do we really need a fairway that's super big? I don't know. I don't play it. I look at it and I say, huh, if I had to play this, I'd lose a twenty disc in a game looking at this course.
Just throw it to my dog.
Yeah, well, I can't hit a car enough to lose it, so I just like, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what somebody told me, if you can't throw it far, you won't lose them, thinking, oh, I bet I could. So, um, that stuff we're gonna have to figure out even on the north end, some of that, how we're gonna mow around. Um, and that was a discussion at the board meeting. Uh, we're probably gonna look for a kit shelter and make some calls around. Um, since that's in that plan still, um, with fundraising from friends to buy, or we gotta do a shelter part of the grants, um, so. But plans didn't call out for how big a pad he has to flatten for us either, so I'm working with Inline and said, hey, can we make this pad? And he goes, oh, we'll figure that out. So there's some things we're gonna look into.
Is there, is there FEMA money that maybe, cause when you got people out playing frisbee golf and all that, if we get a storm or something, would there be FEMA money for maybe a shelter that could be more storm rated that they could, in the event of an emergency, go here kind of thing?
That'd be a question for me here. I wonder if he would know on some of those. I know that's what we utilize to get part of that bathroom paid for at Spruce was. Um, FEMA money.
Sure, type thing, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, if that's something we can do, um, I'm guessing our latrine on the north probably will qualify as, cause it's a concrete.
Mm-hmm.
Building, but something on the, on that cell. Um, and then also I'm having a discussion and I need to get with Dan again too. There's stuff in that plans, like there's twenty thousand dollars for, um, railroad tie steps in a couple spots. Inline's willing to do some grading or just a slope and it, in my opinion, we don't have to do, have something that's a maintenance in fifteen years where we gotta remove it. I'd like to remove that out of the plans. Um, so there might be some wiggle room here and there on the cost if Dan's willing to work with us.
You can do that without losing money.
Yeah, I mean, and my thought or thoughts are if you're able to walk the three miles of this, this golf course, you can do a little incline probably without steps, so.
Yeah, inclines are probably easier than steps, you know?
Yeah, so, um, just, and that's where I came from Jayden, I said, can we go out and look at these, what he's willing to do and say, is that gonna hold? And in a three inch range and can't guarantee anything on a nine inch range, but.
Well, again, easier to fix.
Yeah, yeah, we can just put some dirt on it. So that, that one, we're still, I've been out there daily trying to see what's going on and have conversations with them as now that they're there on site. Um, the next thing is, um, we're still in fight with the state on, um, the water crossings from the water quality project. We wanted to leave them in for maintenance access to different parts of the property. Um, floodplains within the D N R does not want us to leave them in there. They, uh, want the engineers to run models and everything that costs tons of money to show that they're not gonna have a effect on my nose upstream. I understand it. Um, it's in my s- thoughts, it makes no sense that it could have an effect, cause we pulled bags back, we're having less, we're adding space for water to go, but they aren't buying my story without models, so. We'll see where that goes. Engineers are still talking with them on that. Other than that, the water quality project is wrapped up, he's moved out. Um, Ergis got one tractor left on site, I think, but other than that, his equipment's all offsite. Um, we'll see what it holds up when the stream goes down here in a few days, if everything held up from high water, it's the first time. It's had high water worries me a little bit, cause not, the banks aren't totally established. Um, so I guess we'll, we'll get a feel for how that is and we might not have a stream crossing anyway after high water, they don't always. Hold, wouldn't doubt at the top, do you washed out anyway? So, um, maybe I'm fighting a fight for nothing on that one for the state. So those are kind of Prairie Creek one, which has been a big project, is kind of been taking a lot of our time here in recent weeks, um, trying to get everything in.
Well, it's nice to hear it's come along, so it's, yeah, in the world.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, there'll be things to figure out. The mowing's still unquestioned that, it's been nagging at me a little bit, so, um.
I got a question for you, Nate. And so this is gonna be off the path of a little big path a little bit, but yesterday morning we had a, um, alert come out from, um, law enforcement that this three, three thirty fourth and Smith Ferry Road is gonna be closed from four A M to four thirty P M.
Okay.
No emergency services, no emergency service or whatever, you're not on that list for an hour.
Twelve hours.
A half hour, I think, but the fact of the matter is, north, north side of Prairie Creek, can we get through there at all? We used to be able to get through.
Yeah, um, you look at the map, I cleared that road after the storm the other day, just for emergency services to get back those cabins.
Along, right along the tracks or is it?
But I don't know how well this road, there used to be a crossing here and I haven't been back to that crossing by the Seabirding Cabin.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't been back there for a while, cause our, our lease ends right here. Um, I think that's there and probably still in place and like.
You're, you're right there, just blow it up a little bit. So we used to have access, honest, we used to have access to go from that upward level of Spruce Creek back there.
Yeah.
Uh, and just drive along the tracks.
Yeah.
Well, then they, they just.
Railroad put a gate in there.
Well, they also put a bunch of railroad ties in there, so.
Oh, I.
Honestly, if we could just get through there with a side by side, at least we could get a gurney or a stretcher or whatever, you know?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been, like you're saying, I haven't been back there, so if we just need to get the railroad to move some road. Oh, they laid them across that road, I see them on the.
Yeah, yeah, so if you have even a contact number, I would, I'm not afraid to make contact with somebody.
Jayden does, cause he said he knew somebody in the railroad when we were talking about a different project.
Yeah, and I know Lori had, had a lot of contact with at that time too.
Yeah, cause I didn't realize they, I blocked that with, when you could see him.
Well, they're laying all the way up and down the, no, I did talk to a resident up there, just north of there and said theirs have since, go north ones, go the other way. Theirs has since been moved, that they were laying across from their cabin and theirs has since been moved, so maybe they're working on it, maybe they're.
Putting some in or whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they're just laying all the way along there. I mean, it's kind of, skirts on there right away, we can't doubt about it, but if we could have emergency access somehow, if, if the, if the park's not flooded and whatnot.
Yeah, well, yeah, right now they'd be able to get through there.
I mean, God forbid something would happen in a half hour, but I guess it's possible.
Four A M to two thirty P M. Oh, so it's a longer than that.
I thought mine said four A M to fourteen thirty. Oh, so that is a long time.
Yeah.
How can they just block our road like that?
Well, they guaranteed that, that would only be fifteen minute interval, yeah.
If anything over fifteen minutes, they're supposed to break, break the train.
Fourteen thirty.
I was in on that meeting one day, said they promised they'd break a train for.
So fourteen thirty would not be just.
Twelve thirty, thirteen in the afternoon. So you're talking eight and a half hours. So how can they block that? Are they doing work at the crossing or something or?
No idea. I haven't heard about this from them. That's why I tried to call the city yesterday about you and see if they heard anything, because I'm sure the emergency personnel ain't gonna be.
Is it today?
Did they have the date?
Oh, today, twenty second.
Uh, we should go up there.
Right now, I zoom.
Both of them.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with they would be willing to get those railroad ties, they, they, emergency services should be able to come through Spruce and the biggest here, but.
Well, I think they can, that bridge is not, is that bridge, that's not rated any point.
Our bridge over the creek there, yeah, I mean, we take dump trucks or rock across.
Yeah, so, I mean, a big fire truck if there was.
I would think that, there's probably rating on it.
More thinking of an analyst than I am anything.
Yeah, Jayden would know, they, they've done an inspection on it, of course, I don't know what that bridge is rated for, but.
Yeah, I think everybody up there should call that number.
It's this right here. I don't know what they're doing, but.
Is Smith Ferry Road, I did have a question about, is that a Platte County road?
No.
Once across the, okay. I didn't know, somebody was complaining that one of the cabins was telling people they couldn't drive on it, cause it was private road. Well, it's on core lane and so I said, well, if you wanna complain, it's probably cord, like not mine.
And that's the thing with the railroad, you know, they're gonna say, whoa, the ties are on our, our property, we don't want the liability of somebody driving over.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Let's change subject, where we at with the building? You guys find a spot yet?
We haven't, um, and that was another, I was gonna go back and catch Jayden again to sit down if he has a check, second to look at and draw some stuff out. Um, we haven't really, our board didn't even bring it up last board meeting, partly because we had other.
Well, it's in this year's budget, if we don't even have a spot by the time we find a spot, engineer it and try to.
I think we need to have a bid out by next month, in my opinion, we gotta have a spot. If we're gonna have.
Pretty ambitious timeline.
Well, at least get documents ready to bid, in my opinion, so.
Offered a spot, you know?
I know, and I think that's one, I wanna sit down with Jayden and I haven't had a chance to even sit down and draw that one off.
You know, we have that shed there that's fully covered too, we never have any issues up there.
Yeah, I think there's difference between a shed that's got a little chain in the paddock versus one that where young people are going in and out all the time. If we're having, and I, I don't know, Don, and I told Mike this, I went into the super, or the sheriff's department to get all their calls serviced. They've had twenty-two calls from the sheriff's department to that county home and lot since, to the start of June, and that was a concern of mine for when I have.
Since like June is.
January to June.
Okay, January to June.
And that was a concern of mine if we're gonna have a seventeen or eighteen year old high school kid out there.
Glad to hear about it. What are calls they serve? I mean, is it discovered?
Yeah, some of them are mental, some of them are.
More probably in the building.
Yeah, some of them are outside though, from what I've talked to them, so.
Right, I mean, you're gonna have.
Those are.
Usually somebody wandering or something.
Yeah, those are a little bit of concern of mine though, we have, do we trust a kid outside to happen to handle a situation that puts on them? I don't know, so.
In that, if that is a concern, is it something we could put a fence around?
And that's what I want to.
Section.
See if Jayden says, hey, can we fit a fence in our right away here with the highway and get cars in somehow?
So I guess I'm not understanding, what do you mean kids and stuff? This is a shop, your shop.
Well, we hire young people as seasonals.
We hire, you know, young people as in high school kids.
Yes.
We're not talking children here.
No, but there's a difference, Mike, between a eighteen year old and a, you know that, you've had kids. You, would you trust me?
Well, we need to, if we're gonna do something this year, we need to get on it, because right now.
And you made suggestions too, and our board has looked into it, and Jayden, that's something Jayden had brought up too. Is there an option where we can work together? Cause they would like a new shop down the road somewhere. Um, he goes, can we find a piece that we could fit both of ours on a site? So, um, he, he's gonna.
The Melling Buildings for sale.
The what?
The offer met, met the Melling Building right next to the jail. It's huge.
Oh, that is.
Find, I think I do.
Yeah, you said that. I don't know, did they wanna pile money for it? Um, that, that was something.
But wanting and getting are two different things too. You can always make an offer and have it down.
We could not allow Jayden to, what is that's on, if that was something, it would be way too big for us, but.
Right.
Um, having something together.
Anyway, we need to get working on it.
Yeah, for that.
We don't wanna keep.
Yeah, yeah, we're working on, working on that and also the other spot is across the open center. Um, there's electric to a site there for a light on it, we're waiting for a line to get back with us. It was a mitigation site, the D O Ts sent me several things, it looks like it's a possibility for a site. Um, we just have to receive some prairie somewhere else, which we're doing anyway, so it is a possibility. I don't think it's the greatest spot, just to get out on the highway there, but. It's a thought process, keep working at, you know?
Cool.
So. Thank you.
Talking, Ed.
All right, next up we have Ruth from Veteran Affairs.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm gonna go quickly for you off here. Um, so we usually start out with just our office stats for June. Um, we had thirty-three in-person visits, uh, for veterans and family members, seventy-seven phone calls, um, as far as forms filed. Um, we did two intent to file forms, six disability claims were filed, uh, two higher level reviews of burial benefits, benefits form. And unfortunately, I have the wrong month here, but twenty-six decisions were made in June, which is I have made, but it was actually June. That's a lot, that's a lot of decisions. Normally I'm coming with, you know, tens, so that, that's impressive on the V A side. Um, currently, um, in June, we had seventy-three open claims and our office filed seventy-nine percent of those claims. So that's decent, we'd like to see it higher, obviously, but, um, we're working on that. So as far as benefits, four hundred and sixteen veterans, um, and or their eligible family members received eight hundred and one thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars. And that is in May, um, for Jackson County alone. So we are still working on securing volunteer drivers for our pilot program. I put it on the county website yesterday with the application form and information. And I also, um, added it to our Facebook page, so hopefully people will see it there. Um, the Coca Sentinel Press wrote a wonderful article on the front page of their newspaper, which was amazing, and we have had, um, people contact us. So we've had five people so far, um, interested in becoming volunteer drivers. And so I'm collecting the applications and then we're gonna send them on to I O C. So that's exciting, we're moving forward with that. Um, last week was our national training, so Lucy and I did our national training through N A C V S O. And we got our sixteen continuing education credits, so we are good for, um, our national accreditation now for the next year. Um, but I D V A added four additional continuing education credits above our national accreditation, so we're waiting to see how we're gonna get those. And the biggest issue is that N A C V S O runs calendar year and I D V A runs fiscal year.
Always confused.
So, so it'll be, we will learn and we'll navigate and we'll figure it out, but you know, the first couple of years while we do it, I'm sure we'll be like, wait a minute, do I have it all done? Um, but we'll get there, so that's, that's okay. Um, in the MacOcota Sentinel Press article for July, I wrote about, um, never being too late to file a claim. Cause nothing upsets me more than when I have a widow come in and, um, their spouse could have been getting, getting benefits and, and they weren't. And so that, that makes me sad, so I'm, I want people to know it's never too late to come in, come on in, we'll do what we can for you. Um, our July third event at the drive-in, I thought it was a success, it was a lot of fun, we had veterans from all over, um, Wisconsin, Illinois, Jackson County, Jones County, Dubuque County, I mean, just Scott everywhere, they were coming and we had a good time. Um, actually, every veteran that turned in their, um, prize ticket won a prize, so that felt like Oprah, like you get card. Um, so that was really cool, it was really fun. Um, Sarah reached out to me and she wants to talk about dates for next year. So, so we're working towards another event like that. Um, June twenty-seventh, we had a really neat opportunity. Um, Lucy and I went down to Black Hawk College and we participated in the Veterans Experience Action Center. So there were probably, um, I wanna say they had about five hundred veterans there throughout the weekend, we were only there on Friday. Um, but we helped file claims for veterans that were coming through, um, the Veterans Benefit Administration was there along with compensation pension examiners and they were making decisions on the spot, so veterans could go through, they could meet with the V A, they could have their claim decided on the spot, which was really neat. Um, there were a lot of vendors there, a lot of different information, um, a lot of people you could connect with. Unfortunately, we were so busy, we never got out of our chairs to go like, interact with some of the other people, but that was still a really neat opportunity. Um, yeah, so that's what I've got for you.
Amazing.
Yeah, so it was really, it was really cool, it was a neat thing to be a part of, it's apparently it's a biannual thing that they do down there, it's the first year we've been invited to go, so I said, hey, let's go and check it out and see what's all about.
Is that something on a smaller scale we can do around here?
Um, I think it would be hard to get the V B A and the compensation pensioner, um, examinations here. I think we could do a, um, like a resource fair, definitely, I mean, even at the, uh, movie, we had fifteen, um, I call them vendors, but fifteen organizations that came that help veterans, um, and have some kind of service for them. So veterans wanted to go around and talk to, to different organizations, they could, so I think we could definitely do a resource fair, I think that would be easy, I think, um, filing claims on that level that they did would be challenging without a lot of organization, there's a reason they wanna do it every other year or so, yeah. But definitely, I think we could, you know, work on, work on putting something together.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Wonderful, and thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ruth.
Next up, we got visitors and visitors and citizens, I don't see anybody here and I don't see anybody online, but keep it in mind. Um, Scott's not here, so we'll move on. Lisa, you have a thought?
This morning, I need a motion to approve the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five board proceedings and work session minutes as written by a deputy auditor Decker and authorized publication in official newspapers.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike to approve the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five board proceedings and work session minutes as written by deputy auditor Decker and authorized publication in official newspapers. Any other discussion? Although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, working carries.
This morning, um, I did hand out two pieces of paper, one is from the Waste Authority of Jackson County. This is a statement for twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. Are you okay with us paying that or?
What was invoice for?
This is our assessment.
Oh, yeah, well, I talked to Frank yesterday and they're moving forward, I did get a name and contact, so. Um, maybe we can move this along a little quicker, but they're still settling claims and, um, they had one individual that was kind of slow on his process, so. Think they're moving forward there, we definitely need to keep the operation going, so that's our assessment, I think we have to pay.
Yeah, I got a lot of people asking when it's gonna be open again.
Okay, well, so, but you're making a motion?
It doesn't even. You didn't make sure that it was okay to pay this because of the fire, I just, I didn't make sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's annual assessment, right?
It's prepaid, quarter of a.
Quarter of a year.
Yeah.
Quarter of a year.
Uh, the next one that I handed to you was from the Coconut River Water to Management Authority. Um, my question is, is do you wanna pay the whole eleven thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars? Are you still wanting to pay for those small communities? Do you wanna pay for the water testing? What is the board's wishes?
Um, I think we have in the past, right? Isn't this the same number?
Yeah, did we play it all at once in the previous years? I think so. I'd be a favorite of it.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
It's actually in the process, trying to increase what they're doing and stuff, so.
Okay, we'll put it in to be processed. That's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Zulim.
Morning.
Good morning, man.
Morning.
All I have for you this week is the, the calendar. Um, the fair parade is tonight, starting at six o'clock. And then, of course, the fair will be running all week through Sunday, I think. Um, Thursday, July twenty-fourth, it's an R P A meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for down and in, it is at a later time, it's at ten thirty.
Isn't it a Zoom only? I'm almost positive it's a Zoom only.
Could be. It's, it's a later time, that's what was gonna confuse me, so. Um, Friday morning, July twenty-fifth is seven A M is a McCokida Leadership Team Meeting by Zoom for Don. On Monday, July twenty-eighth at nine thirty, is a Prosperity Eastern Iowa Meeting, um, for Mike, um, interview or by Zoom. And at seven, eight P M that night is a Board of Adjustment Meeting in the community room or by Zoom for any of you. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, July twenty-ninth at nine A M. Uh, do remember the eight thirty that morning will be your photo shoot, um, at the solar array. At its, um, Law Enforcement Center. So, that's your one a little early that morning to do that. That's all I have for you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Uh, and we've been told that the work session is not gonna happen, I guess it doesn't matter anyway. I don't really have any other reports, like I said, I talked to Frank this morning for the Waste Authority, and he says they're still doing, only working on it, as well.
I know.
Like the fact that if, if we can, and we have to get material, let's get it done and have us ready.
Is, uh, both work sessions canceled today, or is the recycling one?
No, Denver, Denver canceled, he had something up this morning, so he's not coming, and Donnie, Bonnie said she wasn't coming, so.
Okay, do you got anything?
No.
All right, I guess at that point.
Quiet is always good. Uh, so no further brothers, I make a motion with adjourn.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to adjourn, everybody remember, the fair's going on, have fun out there.
Stay hydrated.
Stay hydrated, it's gonna be hot, watch the animals, watch the people, watch the kids, so, uh, make sure everybody stays safe. With that, all those in favor say aye, motion carries, have a great day.